Good evening, everybody. I now call the Eastlime Zoning Commission regular meeting of November 18th, 2021 to order. It is 7:33 PM, and we will start as we always do with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will sit down. We will. We will sit down. I'd like to welcome everybody. This is probably the largest crowd we've had in quite some time, especially coming off of COVID. Haven't seen anything like this probably in over a couple of years. With that said, just looking from my right to my left, and we have a couple of openings, a couple of regular members that were not able to make it tonight, and so we will need to seat a couple of alternates. I know we have one alternate here. I did see Denise here. Where is she? Come on up, Denise, that'd be great. And I don't know that Jim Liska is here. He might be parking at Dairy Queen right now. I don't know. Hopefully, he's able to join us, and we'll have a full commission. All right. Moving right on to public delegations, which has time set aside for members of the public to address the commission regarding items, topics, subjects that do not appear on tonight's agenda. I'll repeat, that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and address the commission regarding something that does not appear on tonight's agenda? Moving right ahead to the public hearing component, and we just have one public hearing tonight that a lot of folks are interested in, apparently. And it is the application of Viking Firearms and Training LLC for a special permit for indoor recreation, Section 11.2.4, retail sale, Section 11.2.5, and office, Section 22.1.9, at property identified in the application as 15 Industrial Park Drive, Eastlime Assessors Map 26.1, Lot 2. And with that, I will state that the legal ad has been run. I'll note that for the record. Is that correct, Mr. Mahalan?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We do need to read a few things before we get rolling here. We have a zoning official memo that we're going to start off with, and we're going to read that into the record, Mr. Secretary. Thank you.
Due to November 18th, 2021, to the Eastlime Zoning Commission from William Mahalan regarding special permit application, Viking Firearms and Training LLC, 15 Industrial Park Road. The applicant has applied for a special permit to operate a virtual weapons training and education facility at 15 Industrial Park Road. The application has been submitted under the following zoning sections, 11.2.2, private training facilities, 11.2.4, indoor recreation. The applicant has included Sections 11.2.5, retail sale, and 22.1.9, office. I note that Section 11.2.5 is a hotel use and is a typo. Section 11.2.9 does allow for office and retail use, but only of manufactured items produced on site. Technically, Sections 11.2.2 and 11.2.4 are the appropriate sections for the use as described. I note that office use and retail sales are considered subsets to the overall proposed use of private training and indoor recreation. As the commission is aware, your decisions are based on the representations made during the hearing and the record. Since this application is a special permit, the application is subject to the standards of Section 25. This section provides standards for such permits. A site plan submittal is also required under Section 24 of the zoning regulations. This section provides criteria for development of new properties. Since the site is already developed and compliant with all applicable regulations, the Town of Eastlime Land Use Team did not perform a development review. However, I note there is one exception. Because this is a new use of the property, the regulations require, under Section 24.6C, that a sidewalk must be constructed along the property's Industrial Park Road frontage. Further, it is my understanding that an exception or waiver for this item is being requested under the provisions of Section 24.7, exceptions. The applicant's team will give a detailed presentation describing the proposed use and all onsite activities. In conclusion, the commission should carefully consider the information and documentation in the hearing record and evaluate the application as provided for in the regulations.
Thank you. And before we go to the presentation by the applicant, I'm going to just make a suggestion, Mr. Mahalan, in the interest of time and just being efficient with time, this might be a good time for us to pass around a sheet, which will give people an opportunity to sign up, to have a chance to speak tonight, for those of you that wish to speak. I think that'll be helpful to us.
Here.
Need extra pen?
Yes, please. Pass it around. Pass it around yourselves. Anybody else just sign up? Please. Pass it around. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to our presentation by the applicant. I believe Attorney Harris is going to provide that presentation to us.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, Ted Harris, 351 Main Street, Nyonyak, representing the applicant tonight. As you heard from the public notice, this is a dual application for a training facility as well as commercial recreation. The office use, and I agree with Mr. Mahalan, the office use and the minimal retail use is ancillary to the main use and doesn't need separate permitting because it's typical -- is a typical ancillary use for this type of item. I would like to note that I have submitted two exhibits in advance. One is pictures of the ranges, sample ranges that will be constructed on the site, and two would be an additional parking calculation, both of which I'll review with you at the appropriate time. Finally, I'd like to note that their sign was posted on the site more than 15 days before this public hearing, and the date stamped picture is part of the record tonight. As Mr. Mahalan indicated, this is an existing site that was constructed probably in the early 1970s. We do not propose any change to the exterior of the site or the parking. There is adequate parking for our proposed use. Rather, we are going to renovate the interior to make it appropriate for our use. We are a tenant in the property. We do not own the property or are under a lease as a result of that. One of the principals has been in the training business for over 30 years. He's been a law enforcement officer for that 30-year period, and his initial training routine involved actual weapons and guns and ammunition and the like. More recently, the advent of virtual guns, if you will, or virtual weapons became more prevalent, and that piqued the interest of the principals here. To that end, actually, one of -- there is a sample virtual range in one of the pencil's basement, which he's been experimenting with, and it's worked out very well. And as a result, this concept of the virtual recreation and training seems a very viable alternative to using live ammunition. In fact, most of the training nowadays is done virtually by many police departments and the military as well. So the equipment that would be in this facility is basically the same equipment that would be used to train law enforcement officers and is highly sophisticated. This sophistication is unbelievable in terms of the ability to manipulate, and I'll go through that later in my presentation. But first, I'd like to give a little history for the building itself and put this application in context. As I'm sure this commission remembers, this was a beer distributor for many, many years, terminating probably in the early 2000s. I was before this commission for Mike's Famous, an application for a destination Harley-Davidson dealership in 2004. That dealership involved more than just selling motorcycles. It was antique motorcycles on display. It had a restaurant. It had activities for children, and it was basically a destination. This commission did approve that application. Unfortunately, the economy tanked at that point, and Mike never constructed the Harley-Davidson. Next, Bob's Furniture, about two years later, decided this would be a good location. So we were before this commission, again, with Bob's Furniture. At that point in time, the place was still a warehouse. Nothing had been constructed inside. That application was approved in 2006, and the place was completely renovated, and we saw Bob's in operation for the last 10 or so years. Unfortunately, Bob's moved to New London, and now the building is again vacant, and it's been vacant for the last two to three years. So this proposal tonight, we think, will bring back this building to purpose. We are not going to change anything on the outside of the building or the site. All our work is going to be on the inside of the building. And the only things on the inside of the building will be virtual weapons. There'll be no actual and real weapons. And I'll go through that a little later in my presentation as to how that's going to Facsimile weapons is what the terminology is. Interestingly enough, they actually start as real weapons. The firing pin and the firing mechanism are removed from that, and in place of that, there is a laser facility to point at screens. In addition to that, in some instances, there is a compressed air cartridge, which will actually give you the recall you would have with a normal weapon. The laser weapon is a little different from my pointer here. It's the same concept. It's obviously more sophisticated than a little pointer, but it's the same concept These weapons are pointing at a projected target, and we are not using, as some of the children's games and electronic games do, real people and real violence. These will be either static images or images of slow-moving items to get the feel of aiming at a moving object. There'll be no people, if you will, in these booths in terms of the projection on the screen. Rather, there'll be neutral objects and stick figures, if you will. So let's talk about the site itself.
These yellow areas are the range areas.
Mr. Harris, can you hold your microphone?
Sorry.
Just turn it that way. That'd be great.
The yellow areas are range areas, and I'll explain those individually. This area is a conference room, and that'll be used for educational training, classes, and maybe for corporate meetings where after the meeting is held, they can have their recreation. These areas are the initial pistol ranges. There are 16 of them. They technically could be two-man ranges, but in most cases, they are one-man ranges, and I'll go over that one and talk about the parking. This area is an area that's used for individual training. It'll be a trainer and one individual, and it's a smaller room. These two areas are very interesting. These are the rifle areas, and this is so sophisticated that the instructor, who will be in the booth as well as the individual participant, can trigger virtual wind so that people can, without being outside, can get the feel of long-range rifles shooting and not have to be outside. This area, the green area, is reserved for future virtual activities. It may be sports activities. It may be additional range activities, and we have allocated some parking for this space as well. This is an important factor right here. This is the entrance, and if you have been to Bob's at all, you remember that there was a pool at the very entrance. Well, that pool's been replaced by a desk, and that's the first place anyone will face to get entry into the individual area. And the first criteria here is age. No one will be allowed in here under the age of 16 unless accompanied by a parent or guardian. The other factor here is over here. No actual weapon is allowed on the site, and to the extent anyone has one, it'll be locked in a box before entry into the full area. There is also a metal detector at the entrance.
Did I miss what you said about something locked up? Could you repeat that?
I'm sorry?
What did you say?
Any weapons that happen to be on a person as they come in will be placed in a lockbox before entry into the facility.
Thank you.
In addition to that, and for further safety, there is a metal detector at the entrance, so just in case someone was fibbing in terms of having a weapon on their person, that'll catch you. So once you get into the interior, there will be no actual weapons in the location. So let's describe these ranges a little bit more. These ranges are roughly 12 -- the pistol ranges are roughly 12 feet long and have obviously a screen at one end, and that will -- when shooting at that screen, you'll get a response that tells you if you're accurate or not accurate immediately. And the same thing with these ranges. It's similar, except it's much more sophisticated, but the same thing. You get immediate feedback as to how you're doing in terms of accuracy and the like. Again, this is all done digitally and virtually, so there is no noise. There's no gunpowder. There's no rifle shells. There's no pistol shells. It's all done virtually.
No member owns one of these visual guns?
No, that is correct. These will all be supplied by the facility itself. No one can bring their own virtual gun in unless there may be an approval process, but all of the virtual weapons here are from the site itself.
That is something that would stay permanent? You said to have a chance to...
As far as there is no -- let me put it this way. There is no intent to have any foreign laser device brought in. May be a rare exception when they're trying a new device out, but other than that, everything will be simple.
But the owners of the establishment would do that, right? So in other words, average Joe cannot come in there with his own laser gun?
No.
The reason I say that is they can be converted.
Well, let me explain that. These are real weapons that have already been converted.
Yeah. Well, they can be reconverted. That's why I don't want anything off the site allowed in there.
Oh, that is correct. That is correct. Thank you. That is correct.
Let me just suggest we save our questions. Those are great questions, but let's let the applicant give his presentation, and then that'll be followed by questions that the commission might have. So I just, I don't want to disrupt the applicant from giving his presentation. Thank you.
I'd like to review parking, and there is an exhibit in your packet in front of you that goes over the parking that we have established for this site. There was an initial narrative that pursued, that analyzed based on the square footage of the building, and I took a different approach to see if I could get based on what we anticipate for actual use on the site itself. You note that there's a lot of open space that is not really being used, and that has an impact on calculation in terms of area versus parking. So I took -- there are 16 of these booths in this area. I assume that all would be occupied, and a couple of them would be occupied by two individuals. And then I added half again for people that might be waiting, and that came up to 27 individuals. This little room here, as I said, is designed for two people, and so I put two people in that one. This conference room, I allocated 15 people, and that's approximately what would be available in that area. In these areas, there are two to three people per booth. There's an instructor, the participant, and maybe a spotter as well. So I allocated six, I mean, three each for a total of six. And this area, this unspecified at this point, I've allocated 30 spaces. I've also believed that we're going to have between four and 10 individuals on staff at the place at any one time, so I've allocated that 10. And if you total those numbers up, ironically, we got to 90 spaces, which is the same as calculated initially by using the area calculation. There are 120 spaces. The site plan shows 113, but the actual count shows that there really are 120 spaces, so we have in excess of spaces. And given the fact that this won't be used initially, there'll be some experience as well in terms of parking. The next thing I'd like to discuss is sidewalk. 24.6C requires that a sidewalk be, as Bill has indicated, a sidewalk be placed along the frontage whenever there is a change of use and in conjunction with a special permit. But there is a waiver in that very section which says that it can be waived if it's not necessary for pedestrian safety. First, I want to look at the past history. Neither the application for Bob's nor for Mike's Famous had a sidewalk as part of its requirements. If you look at the medical office to the northeast, I guess it is, that there was no sidewalk required at that point in time either. And the other, there's several other factors which I would cite. First, there is a breadth of lawn in front of these buildings. The buildings are set back as well as the parking is, so there's plenty of room for people to walk safely along that lawn if they desire to do so. But there's another overriding factor, and that is you don't want to really attract people to try to cross that narrow bridge with no sidewalk to get to the other side. If you have ever driven down there, it's extraordinarily narrow as it is, and trying to traverse that, it really is quite dangerous. And finally, the -- I know that the other property that adjoins us to the south did place a sidewalk along its frontage, but there's a different context there. The activity on that site is right up to the frontage. There's parking places right up to the buffer area, and there would be no safe way to traverse that property without the sidewalk. As I indicated here, there's an abundance of lawn to traverse the property, and accordingly, I believe that this exception would be valid under the 24C -- excuse me, 24C4 of the regulations. So let me conclude a little bit. This is a boon to the Town of Eastlime and to law enforcement generally. This will provide a training facility and a recreation facility for individuals, for law enforcement, and we expect law enforcement will be interested in using this facility. Right now, the military is using similar technology, and actually, the technology that will be here is military-grade technology. So this will attract other law enforcement agencies from the general area to train here as well, and we believe that this would be an asset to this community. I'd like just to briefly go over some of the pictures that you have in front of you, if you would like. If you show -- the first four are the typical pistol areas where you see some of the backgrounds that would be used in those areas. Then the second to the last is a rifle range, and you can see the breadth of the angle that you can get in that range itself. And the last one is a variety of types of ranges as well. But you can get the feel that it can be realistic but not violent in terms of what would go on here. It's simply target practice and practice to get accurate marksmanship. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hours and days of operation. I guess that's the first one that jumped in. Maybe you addressed that, and I missed it.
I didn't.
Was there a plan in terms of...
It would probably be 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay. Is there another facility like this in Connecticut or on the 95 corridor, anywhere? Again, more of a curiosity question, not one specific to the application. No? Okay.
As you said, this is relatively new technology.
Right, right.
At least on a consumer level.
I understand that there'll be some kind of live shooter training there. Would that be restricted to military and/or law enforcement personnel, or is that open to the public as well?
Well, that would occur only in this area.
There's no live shooter.
There's active shooters from New Orleans.
You're talking live ammunition?
No, 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 I'm not talking that. I heard there was going to be some sort of training to counteract, to train people how to counteract a live shooter. Live shooter situation.
Yeah, that would be active training, and that would be a one-on-one situation here.
Attorney Harris, I think what she's referring to is a letter that was submitted with the application from Mueller and Green. So it basically, can I be done?
Sure.
I think this is where she's coming from. And so it basically reads is, "It is the intent of the VFT to occupy the commercial buildings previously occupied by Bob's Furniture. The use will be a combination of training and entertainment in the form of a laser simulation shooting range, allowing for varying degrees of training and recreational uses. There will not be any live fire at this location, and all shooting devices will be gas-driven blowback devices that, in essence, fire infrared lasers at targets projected on a screen. The use is designed to cater to a wide range of patrons, from the average recreation enthusiast to competitive seekers and groups of varying sizes seeking friendly competitive gamesmanship. VFT will provide professionally-grade equipment for real-life experience. There will be varying areas that replicate a range port, areas to practice de-escalation or scenario training, typical marksmanship-type training, USPCA competition shooting, modular walls in areas that would be able to..." And it goes on and on from there. So I think that's what she was referring to.
Well, yeah. The, would you like?
Attorney Matt Green, 300 State Street in New London. This was my letter. So in all of these activities, part of it would be training for the average person. As you know, in, matter of fact, in this building, they have had active shooter training in all municipal buildings. So that would enable, so to answer your question, it would enable a group who may be a local bank or some other organization to come in and receive some professional training as opposed to someone going out to the site. So that's all, it's active shooter training, which we see all across America today.
Thank you, Attorney Green.
Has the use been determined for the smaller building?
Right now, it's just going to be storage.
So that'll be part of this operation?
Correct.
Okay.
Storage for this operation.
What about signage?
There will be signage on...
You are next. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you're next to I-95. Are you going to have a big sign on the side of the building here? Are you just going to have one on Industrial Park Road or what?
It'll be on the building itself, and that will be subject to Mr. Mahoney's approval.
Towards the highway?
Shouldn't that be on the site plan though? Mr. Chairman?
What's that? The sign?
Should the sign just be on the site there?
No. That'd be later on.
No.
That'd be later on, but good question.
So now, do they have to follow the Connecticut state laws as well in terms of firearms?
Absolutely.
As you said before, you know, the age 16, accompanied by an adult.
Well, these are...
You have to be 21 in the state of Connecticut to carry, or to be licensed for a handgun.
But once these are modified, they're no longer weapons.
Yeah. But it's a training facility, is from what I understand.
But it's limited to laser-type weapons, or facsimile weapons is what the terminology is.
They were advertised as Christmas gifts.
And as I said, it's far less violent than what you would have in the home electronic...
Why the age of 16 for the cutoff versus 18 maybe? It's just, again, more of a curiosity question, just, I understand there's no live ammunition, but 16 versus 18.
Well, I think the thought process was that children of that age, with using a laser technology, can become oxmen as well. Again, it's all laser technology, so it's not dangerous.
No, I got it. I got it. Anyone else on the commission before we move on?
Actually, I had a 22-gauge rifle when I was 14 years old and shot outside with my neighbor. So it, obviously, times have changed.
Times have changed, yeah.
Times have changed.
So then they don't really have to follow the live weapons?
Correct. It's, once they're modified to laser status, then they're no longer a weapon.
Anything further in terms of the presentation or any more questions from the commission before we move along and read some of the letters that have been submitted that we need to read into the record? And we have 19 people from the public that wish to speak, which I'm hoping I can limit folks to one to two minutes, please, and try not to be redundant and say the same thing that your neighbor said. With that said, let's move on to the letter segment here. We've got a number of letters to read into the record, and I think the first one, Mr. Secretary, is by Lucira Jane Niebelung. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right.
This letter is dated November 18th, 2021, East Lime Zoning Commission, regarding Viking Firearms. To the chairman and members of the East Lime Zoning Commission, I ask that you consider two issues regarding the special permit application of Viking Firearms and Training LLC. The first issue is that there is a little detail about how they will operate. Questions that come to mind, which is parentheses, "This is not comprehensible." Given the proximity to schools, will those under 21 be allowed to enter without a directly supervised adult? My father was an NRA instructor in the 1960s and 70s, and I learned to shoot using paper targets. Will moving targets include the choice for people, for the general public? Do they expect to operate with 450 people at one time, which is implied by the capacity limits, limitations in this application? Do they expect to turn their venue into a quote "destination" end quote that allows buses from other locations as in quote "outing" end quote? Which leads me to the second issue. Given the epidemic of gun violence and our gun culture, do we want East Lime to become a destination attraction for this kind of quote "entertainment" end quote? Finally, we have to assume that those coming are gun enthusiasts and will have real firearms in their vehicles. Choices have implications. Thank you for your time and attention. Lucira Jane Niebelung, Niantic.
The second letter is from Brendan Cunningham, Ph.D. Do you want to go back and forth? You want to do that with him?
With pleasure.
Hold that right here. Second letter is from Brendan M. Cunningham, Ph.D. Dear Mr. Mahoney, I write in opposition to the agenda item Viking Firearms and Training LLC for a special permit for indoor recreation, retail sale and office at property identified the application as 50 Industrial Park Drive, East Lime Assessors, MAT 26.1, Lot 2, slated for the agenda at tonight's East Lime Zoning Commission meeting. Basis for my opposition is as follows. He's got a listing. He's got six items here. The first one, wrong zoning category. This is a venue for adult entertainment. It should be zoned under the adult arcade category of the town ordinances. Number two, proximity to East Lime Middle School. School shootings and violence are a crisis in America. Sandy Hook, Connecticut, had one of the worst in American history. Children now regularly practice shooting drills, something prior generations never had to deal with. We should do better. We should not place a reminder of gun violence so close to one of our schools. Number three, accidental injury and death risk. Even Hollywood, with its years of experience handling safe firearms, has numerous accidents from supposedly disabled weapons. The death by firearm of a production crew member on the set of Rust last month is a grim reminder that any firearm is inherently dangerous. Number four, felony possession of firearms risk. There are 12 registered sex offenders living within a three-mile radius of the Industrial Park Drive address. Felons are prohibited from possessing even disabled firearms. There are inadequate procedures in this proposal to ensure that felons are not given replica firearms. Number five, conflict of interest risk. There is a risk that a town employee will receive a second stream of income from this facility. State employees are expressly prohibited from this kind of thing due to the risk of corruption. Number six is the oversaturation of the market. There are multiple alternatives for firearm training in the immediate vicinity. Best regards, Brendan M. Cunningham, Ph.D. And which takes us to the third letter, which is from a Kate Day.
Correct, dated November 17th. Dear zoning commissioner, we know right now that our children are bearing a disproportionate burden of the COVID pandemic. It has clearly taken its toll on their social and emotional health. We see it in how they are socializing in schools, whether it's in the rise in school violence or disrespect towards peers and adults. As community members, when there is an opportunity to buy, excuse me, to provide a healthy space for children and families to interact, we should take it. However, we cannot rationalize that laser shooting and tactical training fits this need, especially given the current crisis. If anything, this could exacerbate the problem. Please consider not approving the zoning permit for Viking Firearms and Training LLC. Thank you, Kate Day.
Next letter is from Esteban Garcia, and the letter reads, "It's addressed to Mr. Bill Mahoney. My name is Esteban Garcia, and I am a resident of 10 Winston Road, East Lime, Connecticut. I'm writing concerning the application for Viking Firearms and Training LLC. I have concerns about how this business is being promoted. According to news reports and direct quotes by the owners, it is being proposed as competitive socializing, and it has been suggested that no live rounds will be used. However, the business name has firearms," in quotations, "which according to the ATF is defined as quote 'any weapon, including a starter gun, which will or is designed to or may readily be converted to expel a projectile by the action of an explosive' end quote source." Oh, the source. So it begs the question that there is a feeling of bait and switch, and there will be eventually, there eventually will be firearms sold or used in this facility. Sincerely, Esteban Garcia." Which takes us to Christine Stahl.
I'm here. I'm here.
I'm sorry?
I'm here.
Okay. Perfect. That'd be great.
Good, it's two pages. Awesome. Thank you.
If you'd like to step to the podium and...
I was not first in line. I want to cut. Do you want me to...
No, 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 go right ahead. I want to stay with letters right now versus what people are just going to say publicly. If you're ready. Are you ready right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you going to read this letter?
I am. I'm going to try to read it really quickly.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So conversations about guns, gun violence, gun ownership and gun rights are complex and have grown increasingly stressful, sometimes hostile and deeply disheartening. So it is not surprising that a new business proposing a mix of entertainment and training relating to firearms has caught such a divided reaction. Responsible gun owners who hear any hesitancy about gun use may feel demonized and become defensive, and they have a right to those feelings. There are also many reasonable and responsible citizens who feel traumatized and want to see a reduction in gun violence. Safety efforts that were once common sense and widely accepted have been twisted in national politics for self-serving needs. Deep and painful fractures have divided our country, our state and our town. Fear and anger have been perfectly manipulated marketing tools for selling guns, more guns, and we are all worse for it. This is evident in the way we project our feelings on one another through the words we use, the signs we wave, the decals we display and the flags we fly. Our children absorb these messages, and only time will tell the impact it will have on them. Gun violence takes many forms, but domestic gun violence and gun suicide are of particular concern for us in East Lime, especially on the heels of the pandemic that has left many people financially and emotionally struggling. The zoning board and town leadership need to exercise wisdom and exhibit courage when evaluating Viking Firearms and Training's proposal. We should all avoid reflexively taking sides. We need to ask critical questions about this business as proposed, as well as what it could morph into. We need to consider what we want East Lime to be known for. We need to weigh the potential costs of unintended consequences. We cannot let a failure of imagination lead to poor risk assessment. Some questions I want town leadership to be asking themselves include, should the use of real-life modified guns be marketed in East Lime as entertainment? Does this desensitize people, particularly children, to the legality of guns? Given the deadly serious nature of guns, would East Lime be better served by a law-enforcement-only training facility? If there is a need for safety training and de-escalation, would it non-tactical training on topics such as safe storage and recognizing the warning signs of suicide and domestic violence better serve civilians than an active shooter scenario? When considering zoning approval for a special permit within a light industrial area, I want you to ask if you, if our current zoning laws have ever interpreted training as any type of training, including non-classroom physical training? And if so, are there any limits to the type or rigor of training or on its recipients? Are we in danger of opening Pandora's Box? My intent tonight is not to be, to appear hyperbolic. I am here with my neighbors and my new friends in the back on the other side to present sincere concerns and to implore you to take the time to do the research necessary to be sure that you are making the best decision for East Lime and its residents' futures. Thank you.
Christine, if you'd just state your address. I don't know that you did that at the beginning. We didn't get your address.
41 Asfakachi, Niantic.
Thank you very much. And moving on to Steve Louber, hopefully I pronounced that correctly, Ph.D.
Dear members of the zoning board, I write in objection to the greenlighting of Viking Firearms and Training. While I understand that this is an opportunity for a large business in the area run by three citizens of the town, I have to object for the following reasons. The statistics are clear that more, the gun industry is regulated by a state or city. The fewer violent crimes and deaths occur, not to mention a drastic reduction in suicides. Then there's a link listed. While this establishment is dealing with simulations and not real ammunition, it still encourages the culture of gun ownership and use, which I would prefer not to increase in East Lime. If this were a truly fantastic laser-tagged venue, this would perhaps be a different conversation. But the fact of the matter is that an important point, even a selling point for this proposed establishment, is that everything is as real and faithful to the real tools and training as possible. It is this training that is particularly concerning to me. What possible need do civilians in East Lime need for tactical training? While it is within everyone's right to learn things, this strikes me as entirely unnecessary. And while the January 6 investigation is ongoing in Washington about the strategic and coordinated plan to overthrow the Capitol, approving this would be, at best, tone deaf, if not explicitly detrimental to the community. I want to encourage businesses, especially local businesses in our town, but this does not seem like the right avenue to pursue. With my apologies to the proposed owners, I do not wish to have this establishment in our town as a parent to two small children, as a teacher and as a general citizen. Thank you for your consideration, and please don't hesitate to contact me if you have any questions. Steve Louber, Ph.D.
Thank you. And moving on to public comment in regards to this application. Typically, what we do is we take public comment from those who are supportive or for an application, then we follow that with comments and from those that are against it. I'm just going to follow this list right here, so we're probably going to get a mixture as we go through, but in fairness to those that signed up on the sheet, I just want to follow this just to keep things very simple and clean. And first name is crossed out and added later. I recognize that name. And we're going to start with Mr. Rich Steele. And if there are others that wish to speak beyond the list of 19 names that I have here, we're not going to disqualify you for speaking because you're not on this list, but we're going to start with these 19, beginning with Mr. Steele.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
When I signed up, I wasn't first, so I guess it pays to wait. So initial thoughts that I had are that this can present a potential danger to our police that service our community. It's hard enough to tell fake weapons from real weapons when you're out on the street. There are kids that have toy guns that look like real guns. I don't know if these laser-modified weapons will be out on the street at all. It sounds like they're only going to be within their facility, but will they be marketed so that people can set up galleries in their basements if they want to? This makes it really difficult for our police who need to come to split-second decisions as to what the potential danger is. Additionally, for the general public to receive tactical training, that could indeed, again, endanger our police officers. It's hard enough to be able to de-escalate situations, much less to go against somebody who is well-versed in how to handle the arms and present dangers to you. As was mentioned, we've got proxim... As was mentioned, we've got proximity to two schools. We've got Lily B. Haynes as well as a middle school. We've got the Orthopedic Clinic, which probably has a pretty fair amount of geriatric patients that attend there. We've got a gymnastics studio. There's a CrossFit gym, and Stop &amp; Shop is very close by. One thing that I wonder is, in terms of the gun safety aspect, will that be an important component of the training? And will there be devices such as trigger locks that will be available to clients who attend this facility to present, to prevent accidental shootings at homes? The age limitation of 16, I feel, is well below what it needs to be. When we had the marijuana dispensary hearings, Dr. Frank Mallett's mentioned that an adolescent's brain doesn't mature until 25, so I think it's reasonable to at least go to 18, but preferably to 21. And then, in addition to those age limitations, as one of the letters mentioned, the felons that may be in the local area, will there be background checks as the clientele go in? Do you present your driver's license? And then that would be read against a base of crimes. Two last points. I think it's, it's interesting that they have both the entertainment and the training listed together. To me, those, those don't really coincide, and I would hope that if this does get approved, that there be separate hours and locations for the training and for the competitive nature. And lastly, in terms of the exterior signage, as the commission was asking about, East Line has always had very rigid requirements or, or requirements that things be tasteful in terms of signage. When it was mentioned that it'll be pointing at 95 visible from there, it's probably going to be a pretty big sign, and I think this needs to be tasteful, that the signage doesn't have weapons in its display. And the use of Viking, I know that that's their LLC name, but our high school's mascot, they're the Vikings. And in the age of school shootings and that pan, and that epidemic, I think a different name, if it's going to be used for the signage, would be appropriate. And I won't repeat what other people have said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and my address is 23 Rose Lane, East Line.
I was just going to ask you. Thanks. Perfect.
Sorry.
And moving on to Janice Orsini.
Good evening. My name is Janice Orsini, and I reside at Sea Spray Avenue in Niantic. We have lived in Niantic as a seasonal resident for 26 years and as a permanent residence for the last 11 years. And we love Niantic. We're very happy and fortunate to be able to live here, as I'm sure each one of you feel the same way, as well as everyone else in this room. And we're very fortunate to have such great amenities. We live near the shore. We have a great museum. We have a little theater and, but I think our biggest asset is our wonderful school system that we have in East Line. I first, I only recently heard about the Viking virtual gun range through a mutual friend, so I thought I would research some information about it, and I could only find one article in the Connecticut Examiner about this proposal. I verified this information with the New London Day, and they also said they did not run any information about this virtual gun range in the day. And I think most people in Niantic probably get their news from the New London Day. So I was very disappointed that so little information was being brought to the public about this facility. Also, the blueprint on the East Line zoning website was, of this facility, was unreadable even when I enlarged it, so that wasn't very helpful. My great and troubling concern is our youth, who will be able to have a fun experience by holding a simulated exact firearm replica in their hand, complete with a CO2-driven kickback feature that simulates actual ammunition being discharged. And is this what we really want or we really need, especially to entertain our impressionable youth population? As we advance in our technology, we need to be mindful and responsible in regard to how this virtual technology impacts our culture and our species. As a mother, grandmother and a retired healthcare professional, I cannot support this business. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. And moving on to Spencer Clapp, I believe, if I'm reading that correctly. Thank you. Just state your name and address. If that's your name, state your address for the record.
Yeah, good evening. I reside at 11 Chadwick Place in Niantic.
Thank you.
I've been a responsible sportsman since I was 12 years old and started hunting pheasant in the cornfields of Illinois with my father. I've held a Connecticut hunting and waterfowl, waterfowl license for over 20 years. I also possess a valid Connecticut license to carry a handgun. I own several firearms, both long guns and handguns. I'm also a retired public school administrator, excuse me, who's had to call a lockdown in my middle school with over 1,000 children and adults because of a report of a gun being brought to school. I've had to quietly and stealthily search classrooms trying to identify the student with the gun before my school became another Sandy Hook. Over the past three years, 2019 to 2021, there have been over 400 school shootings. Our culture has been so desensitized to this violence that it is not even reported unless there are multiple victims, like the shooting Monday in Aurora, Colorado. This is personally, this is personal for me because my oldest son, Ryan, happens to be a high school, a high school teacher, but not at Central High where the shooting occurred. I'm neither for nor against this proposed facility. In fact, if it was approved and in certain circumstances, I could easily see myself availing myself of it. But I have several pertinent questions that the commission should consider, and if you feel they are outside your limited jurisdiction, then perhaps you can just recommend that the Board of Selectment consider some of these questions and concerns. I'll try to be as succinct as possible, which is a challenge for me considering that I am an attorney. First of all, the name. Any firearms facility in East Line should not be named after our high school interscholastic mascot. The two things are inherently incompatible. Guns and high school sports are diametrically opposed. East Line has several Revolutionary War patriots for whom the facility could be named, and parenthetically, I would note that the Vikings never had firearms. Given the national crisis in mental health adolescents for, adolescents today, depression, suicide and drug abuse, this facility should be strictly restricted to adults 18 and over. I feel very strongly about this, even with the caveat that the proponents have said under parental use is just not adequate. As an educator, parent of three and sportsman, I cannot emphasize the importance of this. Firing a gun, including a simulated and modified firearm, creates a dopamine response in the shooter, a pleasurable euphoric experience. It's why people like to shoot guns. And children, anyone under the age of 18 is legally a child, does not have the mental and emotional wherewithal to process this response appropriately. For an emotionally fragile child, this could become, this could become addictive or obsessive. And saying that it is okay for a child to fire a high-powered handgun under a bolt, under adult supervision is specious. No 12-year-old should be firing a simulated Glock 9mm under any circumstances. What sort of content will this so-called recreational training videos contain, the so-called live-fire scenario? Will the videos reinforce racial, ethnic and religious stereotypes the way some video games do now? Will the bad guys be wearing turbans and beards? Or will the criminals have dark skins and kinky hair? There was not very much that was talked about except mentioning a stick figure. Well, I don't see anyone being able to go into a range and be shooting at a stick figure. There's got to be some sort of image that's going to be up there, and what is that image going to look like? What types of firearms will the facility be offering? We've heard nothing about that. Will it be 22, 25 or 32 caliber small bore guns or larger, more powerful guns like a .380, 9mm or a .40 caliber? Will they also offer simulated long arms like 12-gauge shotguns and/or deer rifles? It sounds like they will. Will they be using assault rifles like an AR-15? And if so, will they be capable of firing semi-automatic or fully automatic modes, which for a real gun would require a Class III license? These are not, these are not firearms that responsible sportsmen use. I'm talking about a semi-automatic AR-15. They are favored by right-wing groups like the Proud Boys who stormed the Capitol on January 6. Does East Line really want to attract this element to our community? Finally, I conclude with the issue of liability. Did I mention that I was a lawyer? Despite the fact that the facility would make users sign a waiver of liability to protect business from liability, courts have considered these waivers to be contracts of adhesion, and they are frequently not enforced. If East Line were to approve this facility and the worst-case scenario happened with a mentally unstable person training there and then using a real weapon to kill or injure innocent people, would the families of these victims bring suit against the town? I don't know the answer to this question, but I can say with confidence that if I were the lawyer representing a victim's family, I would certainly name the town as a defendant. Thank you for your time, and I have a copy of my remarks for the record.
Moving right along to Ron Stevens.
Good evening. I'm Ron Stevens, 1 Cherry Street, Niantic. And I came down tonight because I thought that you should hear from somebody that took this training, and the applicants here were kind enough to train myself and my wife with the laser, laser training when we eventually got our actual gun permits and were both licensed in the state of Connecticut. Now, one thing I wanted to point out, I heard all the concerns from the people that spoke prior to my speaking about safety and concerns and the ramifications, and I think I would like to address that issue. When we first started our training, the first thing we were taught for at least an hour was safety. Halfway through our training, we were taught safety. At the end of our training, what were we taught and concluded with? Safety. The applicants here are very professional, very knowledgeable and very concerned about the safety factor. You know, whether we like it or not, guns are a part of American life, and I think it's important for people, children 16 and 17, who can get a gun and go out and hunt deer, and God knows we have enough deer in East Line, that they should be familiar with firearms before they get one, and they should be well-educated in the safety factors. And that is a necessary commodity. I think at 16, you can hunt, you can carry a gun, and a lot of these kids, when I hear the concerns, I think about all the video games I see my kids and my grandkids looking at. That's the concern. Proper safety training is not the concern, that's the solution, and that's what we should do. And I would warmly welcome this environment into the town of East Line. It's, it's, not only is entertaining, but I think more importantly, to properly train with safety precautions anyone concerning firearms, because they're all over the place, we should have that done, and that we are going to be a better and safer community when that is accomplished. So I would ask that you approve this application. The people that I know personally that are doing it, very professional, very concerned citizens, and I would welcome this, and this board should welcome this as a great asset to our community. So thank you. I did want to make one other representation or indication. I think your recording secretary does a great job.
Spectacular job, actually. Spectacular job. Thank you. Great. That's good. And moving on to a Mr. Jeff Ruess. Am I saying that correctly?
Uh, Lewis.
Lewis, excuse me. You just state your address, Jeff, before you get, before you get started. Appreciate it.
Jeff Ruess, 2 Day Road. It's a tough act to follow, Ron. You had some of, a lot of the same concerns that I had. I'm for this project. The gentlemen that are in, the applicants, 100% A1 gentleman. Like I said, I don't want to repeat what Ron said, but I'm, I'm all for it. I mean, it's a bet, it's a good, it would be a nice place to go instead of spending a whole lot of money. You got a shooting range in town that shoots live ammunition. Gets expensive after a while. I'm also a card member for card carrying, and, you know, it gets, like I said, it gets expensive. This place could save you a whole lot of money. It's not necessarily aimed at the kids. It's to help everybody, to train them, to get everybody to understand how dangerous they can be. They teach safety. It's about all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And moving on to Charles, and if I'm reading this correctly, Platz. Is it P-L-A-T-Z? Charles Platz?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission, members of the community. My name is Dr. Charles Platz, 81 Arbor Crossing, East Line. I've known the applicants for many years, and in particular, I have known Mr. Como. He is one of the most honorable men that I have ever met. He loves his wife, he loves his community, his job, his family, his friends. I own, along with my business partner, a gun store. I am an NRA instructor. There is no one that we choose to support to train and educate our customers other than Viking Firearms and Mr. Como, Detective Como, simply because each and every day we deal with firearm enthusiasts and customers of varying levels of experience. People who have been shooting and training with firearms for their entire lives, brand-new shooters of all ages who, for their very first time, are looking to purchase a firearm. And I can tell you with absolute certainty from this very firsthand experience, safety is of absolute paramount importance. And you are never too young to start learning proper firearm safety, because firearms are in many American homes. Mr. Como teaches, quite frankly, the finest class, and I'd like to thank Mr. Stevens for essentially taking all of the words out of my mouth and leaving me to come up here and completely ad-lib because, quite frankly, sir, you said everything that I was going to. Safety from the very beginning, safety during the course and safety at the end. Quite frankly, we can tell the students who come from Mr. Como's class because their knowledge, then their respect of firearms is, quite frankly, better than anyone else. As a firearm owner, as a gun store owner, as a member of this community, I wholeheartedly support this business and the gentlemen that are proposing their company today. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving right along, we have Mike Rogers, who will be followed by Justin Hannah.
I'd like to support the proposal before the committee tonight. As a former light infantry weapons specialist, I've fired on military simulators in the past, and I can't wait to see the change in... past, and I can't wait to see the change in technology between now and the 1980s. I'm also a certified NRA range safety officer. These guys drill safety home every time we talk, handle, mention firearms, ammunition, safety, safety, safety. The guy that stood up and talked about the children, they're pretty resilient. When I was in high school, kids carried 22s. We had a rifle team in Legerd. We carried rifles on the school bus. Nobody shot anybody. Nobody threatened anybody. But if you tell the children it's bad and they hide, what are they gonna do when they find an unattended firearm? Those are the kids that get in trouble. Not the ones that are trained, not the one that their parents or their grandparents take them shooting, explain safety, show them safety, live safety. Kids are pretty resilient. Yeah, there's a school back there, but there was also a Budweiser distributor there. Did we raise a generation of drunks? If we did, it wasn't because it was a Budweiser place there. And now, we're not gonna raise a generation of gun-crazed kids just because a train laser tag opens down the road from the school. And then, for the gentleman to stand up and say that you need trigger locks on a laser gun, and how are we gonna handle them at home? We're not. They're part of the building. They don't leave. There's just so much information and sheer ignorance that I'd like to see Mark and Matt and, I'd like to see them buff up the proposal and just get it out there. The day paper probably won't print it anyway. But it's just sheer ignorance. People are scared of their shadow. But like I say, I rise in support, and I hope it works out. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Mike, if you could just state your address, too, for our...
56 Oakwood Road.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And Justin Hannah, who will be followed by Michael Paletti? Palet? Thank you, Paletti, excuse me.
Hello, my name's Justin Hannah, 34 Park Place in Niantic. I've had the privilege to know Detective Como here from working with him. Worked with him for a couple of months now, and I've known him in a law enforcement capacity. I got my pistol permit at 21-years-old. I had shot prior to that, and frankly, it was, I should not have handled a live firearm. And I was, looking back on this proposal and hearing about what's going on here, I wish I had the opportunity to train and make my mind up on, you know, something like a laser firearm. I went to the range with my cousin. I was probably 14-years-old. He had a pistol permit. He took me in. He was able to let me shoot there. I had no concept of firearms, safety, training, anything at the time. When I got my pistol permit at 21-years-old, you know, you go through the NRA class, and they teach you the bare minimum. Where I went, it was the bare minimum. I can't speak to Artis' class, I've heard only great things. Once again, you know, you get blushed to get your pistol permit, they send you on your way. I went out and bought a firearm, and I got to the range. Once again, I did not know a lot about firearm safety, anything like that. I look at this proposal in general, and this business, as a wonderful opportunity for people to take that NRA class to the next step, before they go out and buy a pistol, well, pistol, or before they even apply for the permit in general, to, you know, familiarize themselves with how to manipulate a firearm, how obviously they could be taught how to store it. Get a general concept for, is this something that they should have? As opposed to getting a pistol permit, buying a weapon, not using it, storing it incorrectly, being a danger to somebody else on the range. I think from a law enforcement capacity, I think this offers training that we would not have otherwise in the state. Range time's incredibly hard to come by for law enforcement. We don't have, you know, access to facilities where, you know, standard ranges, you know, you stand in your lane, and you just, you can't draw from holsters, you can't do anything like that because of the risk of a misfire around or something like that striking somebody. I think this will allow, you know, people to shoot safely from holsters or from other, I'm not sure if that's even in the proposal, but that would be a wonderful thing as well that normal ranges don't offer. All I can say is I know Detective Como, I know he takes firearms very serious, I know that he, you know, will do the utmost job making sure that it's a safe place, and I support the proposal.
Thank you, Justin. Moving on to Michael Paletto, who will be followed by Clayton Walters.
Good evening, commission, good evening, community. My name's Mike Paletto. I live at 4 Will Berlin, East Line, Connecticut. I moved here last year. Before I moved here, I was a New York City police officer. I was an instructor for the active shooter unit, and we wholeheartedly depended on FATS machines. FATS machines are firearm training simulators. This is a way for police officers, this is a way for the community to come out and put people in actual scenarios where they're able to determine if they're gonna be pulling their firearm and use it, or de-escalation devices. They're going to put them in realistic scenarios where everyone is nervous. So heightened emotions are up. It's gonna get you comfortable with your weapon systems, it's gonna get you comfortable with your shot placements, it's gonna get you comfortable with dealing with people. Whether you have to de-escalate the situation, whether you have to use mace, pepper spray, batons, or ultimately go to the firearm. There's a lot of emotion when it comes to firearms, and right now, everyone is at a heightened, heightened point. This, along with obtaining a firearm, is a way to make yourself comfortable, as everyone is, as a couple guys have said tonight. It makes you comfortable in real-life areas where you might be walking down a parking lot alone at night after you've closed up the store, and someone approaches you, you know? It puts you in realistic scenarios. This is nothing but a video game. This is nothing but a way for people to become comfortable with firearms. I can't go off pro-firearm, anti-firearm, because it's just a video game at the end of the day. You're talking about blowback. Blowback is nothing but a paintball gun. Blowback is nothing but a little air, you know, being obtained from the firearms. I've used these systems for 15 years. I've trained on the systems. The systems along have, and like people have said, range time and use of public facilities, you know, it's a way for police officers to train, it's a way for the community to train. And you, if people are scared, give it a shot, you know? Obviously, I'm pro-for this business. Not only will it bring people to the community, but it'll also bring revenue, you know? And, you know, from what I see there, you know, after the pandemic, a lot of people are hurting right now. Do you have any questions on firearms, on the simulator? I've used it for 15 years, I'm very comfortable with it. The scenarios are usually introduced by an instructor, and they can determine if the person is comfortable, or if he's a newbie. If they're starting out, shoot, don't shoot, or if they're pretty comfortable and they could escalate it to shot placement. Or if people wanna train on targets alone. But I'll open it to the commission. Is there any questions on the training systems?
Anybody have any questions for the speaker? Appreciate your expertise. Thank you. Thank you for serving, too.
No, no problem. Thank you for being part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Moving on to Clayton Walters.
Clayton Walters, 35 Glattimer Drive. I just heard this term "weapon" thrown around here all night. You know what a weapon is? That's what a criminal carries. I have my carry license, I don't consider my gun a weapon. It's a safety device for me. Secondly, you can have a firearm license in the state of Connecticut when you're 12-years-old. So the whole, 12-years-old, you can go hunting with your dad, carry a rifle. And then, the third thing that nobody's touched on is I have a business that's completely an enthusiast business. I build lift kits and Jeep suspension systems. My business has grown two-and-a-half times in the last year. I think this is an excellent opportunity to get...
Just address the commission and speak into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think this is an excellent opportunity for this community to bring a business in here that's gonna attract people from probably 100-mile radius. And then, you know what? In the wintertime, when all our restaurants are suffering because all the beach traffic is gone, it's gonna create an opportunity to grow this community, and I think it's gonna be a great asset to the company.
Thank you. Thank you. And Christine Stahl, we heard from Christine, unless you have something else to say beyond the letter?
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Moving on to Michelle, trying to read people's write, Maitland?
Maitland.
Maitland? Excuse me.
Yeah. 6 Acorn Drive.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the job that you do. Personally, I'm not a fan of the idea of the co-location of firearms-themed recreation with professional training. We've heard a lot of people speak to the professionalism and the sincerity and character of the owners, which I'm not disputing, but I don't recall having heard a lot of things about the recreation piece. It's all about the training piece. I don't, I don't have as much of a problem with the training piece. My problem is with the co-location of recreation and training. And by the way, I just, I happen to work for the Town of Groton, and I happen to work for Public Works. I happen to be responsible for the contracting of the cleaning of the Groton firing range. So I have relationships with the Groton police officers, and I'm familiar with the fact that police need training. There's a shortage of police training facilities. And I would think that maybe this would be a great business just dedicated to that, and it might draw people from all over New England just for police training. And it's needed because we want our police officers to be professional and to, you know, hold levels of professionalism. That I diverted from my little statement here. I did not find a lot of detail on the proposal, and I do have many concrete questions as a result. And I don't know if it's possible for me to provide a list of questions, because it's long, so I don't want to go through all my questions with you all here right now. Can I offer a list of questions?
You can offer a list of questions, sure.
Okay, so I have...
Right here. You want to just step up and hand it to us if you don't mind?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I hope you're really welcome.
Thank you.
Steve, do you have any comments for the applicant? They may want to... Staris, I don't know if you want to look at that?
Okay. So, just as an example of some of the questions, because I wasn't gonna go through all of those. One was if, in light of the new I-95 interchange work happening down in that area, if a traffic study had been conducted, if there is an accreditation body for this type of business, and then, will recognized gang and hate group imagery be regulated? That's my question. So, my two other issues are, if this enter-by struggles, what prevents them from changing their business model? Again, we've spoken to the character of the owners, but what if they sell to another person? Can they begin selling guns or ammo? They did not call business Viking marksmanship or Norse training. They called it Viking firearms. It's in their name. So I ask that any zoning permit be limited to activities presented, and any expansion or change require subsequent approval. A training and recreation center could have been offered as a not-for-profit, but it was not. Understandably, this is a basis for public support, new tax dollars. I benefit from new tax dollars also. But at what expense? We must be clear-eyed that profit motive will be the driver in all decisions, at least part, including employee recruitment, training, product offerings, and marketing. Which begs the question to the exterior signage, which I'm gonna skip because that's already been discussed. Members of the zoning commission, as specified in the regulations, your mission is promotion of the health, safety, and general welfare of the town. Perhaps a lesser-known charge is also securing safety from panic. Given rising gun statistics and our nation's current social climate, it doesn't take much imagination to see that even a minor mission creep in this business, or for that matter, one errant staff person, could be a cause for great alarm. And finally, your task is also encouraging the most appropriate use of land, conserving the value of land, homes, and other buildings. I don't know that I would personally deem this business the most appropriate use, and obviously, none of us have a crystal ball. Again, I support the need for training. But what I do know is that this is the only opportunity that the town has to pause, deliberate, and assign appropriate conditions. So I urge you to fulfill that duty this evening and table this application for more thorough consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle. Moving on to Jamie Barshelburn. Maybe she's out in the hallway, or out in the lobby. Okay, thank you.
She's coming? Okay. Sorry, the other person is still talking out there. It's still late. It's still late.
Ah, okay.
The other person is still talking.
How long is the delay? A minute, 30 seconds?
Yeah. No, there's always a 30-second delay.
David Harlow will be next. Go ahead.
Jamie Barshelburn, 31 McElany Drive, here in Niantic. So I've heard everyone speak from out there tonight, and I had a lot of the same questions, concerns. So I called up, sent the owners an email, got a call right back from Detective Como, and I talked with him through all my concerns, and he alleviated most of my fears that a lot of people have brought up tonight. And I don't want to belabor it and repeat everything that everyone else has said tonight. I think Ron covered just about everything, but I cannot say enough how much I support this, and I look forward to more people learning safe gun ownership and gun safety. So I'm not gonna take everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you state your address, Mike, yesterday?
I did.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. Thanks so much. Moving on to David Harlow. Who will be followed by, I believe, Gary Pivo? Pyvo? Pivo?
Good evening. David Harlow, 80 Upper Patagonia Road. I am strongly opposed to this facility being in the core of the town. I will just say that, for the most part, I will just say that I support the previous speakers. I have a couple of things that all hit, so that my presentation doesn't go on too long. I am a former U.S. Marine. I am a combat veteran from Vietnam. And that experience has led me to feel very strongly that having simulated combat is really a bad idea. I am very much making a gang of such activities, even video games that our kids play. I'm standing here only, not because I was very good at it, but because I'm a fugitive from the law of averages. That's one point. I'd like to underscore the fact that this business will be too near schools. In fact, I drove door-to-door from the junior high school to the facility. It's a mere half-mile. Lily B. Haynes isn't too far away. And I, as a Marine, certainly, safety training was something that I got very strongly, and I support. However, one thing that did frighten me is that this business is likely to draw individuals from, call it 100 miles away. We have no control... We have no control over who those individuals might be. It only takes one. I have a nine-year-old granddaughter in the third grade. I certainly, at least once or maybe several times a week, I flash the Sandy Hook. I think that would be a terrible disaster for this town. The probability is extremely low. No matter what the safety training you can get in this facility, there's no controlling mentally unstable individuals, either temporarily or long-term. We're notoriously unable to identify those individuals ahead of time. I don't think our society is equipped to do it. I'm not sure if we tried, we could pull it off. So anyway, I, that's something that bothers me a lot following my tour in Vietnam. I was assigned to military police duty, and certainly, if you're any kind of police officer in today's environment, you need highly, highly specialized training. And I would say firearms use is only a small part of that. Policemen have to face, as we know, immediate decisions between protecting their own lives or trying to protect the lives of others. And now those decisions have to be made almost instantaneously. And I have a lot of admiration for our police and what they have to face. So finally, I will just conclude by reiterating my strong opposition to this facility in the core of our town. I think it's too close to vulnerable groups, especially our children. I know we have guards on them now, thanks to Sandy Hook. However, I do not see any defensive perimeters around the time that school buses arrive and depart. And as I say, it only takes one individual. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And moving on to Gary Paivo. Thank you. John Drabek will follow.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Gary Paivo for Colonial Drive, Eastlime. I'm here as a homeowner, as a fellow member of the community. I also happen to bring about 40 years of experience as a town planner, town planning, zoning officer, and a professor of real estate and urban planning. So I apologize if I get a little bit into the weeds because of that. I have three basic concerns that lead me to be doubtful as to the wisdom of this. The first is, I think that something's already been addressed, but that the proposed retail and office uses don't seem to be allowable as a special use in the district because of what's already been mentioned, which is that it's not, you know, related to manufacturer or processes, sales on-site. But the term that the sales are just ancillary and therefore could be okay leaves me confused because I'm not sure what is proposed for being sold. If it's food being sold, okay. You know, vending machines, okay. But if it's guns or other kind of, you know, material related to that activity, then I think it opens up another, you know, question as to whether that is allowable under the code. So that's one concern I have. The second is that, you know, I think that there are questions here raised pertaining to the general standards in Section 253, that uses shouldn't disrupt orderly development or have objectionable influences. And I know for a lot of folks here tonight, this is nothing objectionable whatsoever, but for a lot of other people, there are things that are objectionable about this. Why do I say that? Well, first, there are concerns that this might be an attractive nuisance, bringing folks to town, apparently perhaps from long distance away, that would possibly, at least some, bring guns in their car, increasing the chance of guns being discharged illegally by accident or in anger in Eastlime. That's a concern that some might object to. Second, I'm concerned the training might encourage people to keep guns at home, which unfortunately increases the chance of suicide, deadly accidents, and domestic violence. Studies indicate that. Third, I'm worried this could set up a cycle of economic development around gun services and retailing and so on, and training and so forth, a kind of geographic clustering as people interested in guns are attracted to Eastlime, which in turn attracts more gun-related business, which attracts more gun enthusiasts, and so on. The image of a large sign on the freeway that's carrying tens of thousands of people through Eastlime, and that's the image they see a day, that's a concern, that it would shift our town's character and its reputation in a direction that some would find objectionable. Residents who are uncomfortable with guns, and not all of them are, and I respect that, but those that are would feel alienated, could be forced or choose to leave in a process that geographers call cultural displacement. It could also harm economic development and property values as the very vacationers, home buyers, restaurant owners, and others we want to attract think twice about coming to a community known for a strong gun culture. All of these changes would be disruptive to orderly development and objectionable influences. So while not everybody would feel that way, this is a real concern for some. And then lastly, I want to close and say, whether you think the proposal, you know, fits within the standards of the code or not, I think it's important to remind you that you have a responsibility, which I know you will attempt to meet in every way earnestly you can, but it's not just to determine whether the proposal meets the standards, but also by the language in the code, which also meets the approval of the zoning commission. If it meets the standards, you may give it a permit, but you also need to determine that it meets the approval of the zoning commission, which is over and above the standards. And by that, I'm talking about to just look at state law and such things, protecting public health and safety and property values and general welfare. I don't know that, given the kind of objections and objectionable influences that some folks are concerned about, this kind of activity would meet that standard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And moving right along to Mr. John Drabek. I believe he was out in the lobby. Saw him standing against that back wall.
I think he was, yes. Still is, I think.
Who will be followed by Judd Andres. And then Dr. Ronald Michaels will be the last speaker, unless we have some additional speakers. Really? Okay. Okay. We'll move on to Judd Andres. Followed by Dr. Ronald Michaels.
Hi, for the record, my name is Judd Andres. I live in 42 Dean Road, Eastlime. I'm a certified DEP Hunter Safety Instructor, adjunct professor for UNH and Project Management. I also own a business management consultant business for the pharmaceutical industry, and for over 15 years have been involved in youth, high school, college, sports coaching with respect to football, across martial arts, and outdoor orientation. So I know a lot about training. I know a lot about the objective of training. And what this business is about is increasing gun owner responsibility, understanding what it means to do that, and the ability to be proficient at operating your firearm in a very safe, low-risk manner. All right? As a DEP Hunting Safety Instructor, we had aspects of both classroom and scenario teaching, as well as also practical experience. We would develop scenarios. You would learn how to handle that, but it was always on a modified, non-fireable firearm, and all different kinds. Okay? And when we got to the point of actually, you had to fire it, you had to fire a 22 rifle as well as a shotgun as part of Hunter Safety, it was evidently clear that there were folks that needed more than just that experience to truly understand how to operate on the field when you're in safety. And this is one of the things that I'm really excited about, is that we can actually partner with the DEP and provide real-life scenario planning without having to, without the fear of actually using live ammo. All right? You can create situations from an ethical perspective of, do you shoot or not shoot? This isn't about an active shooter. Okay? It's not, we're not generating gun-crazy people. We're actually encouraging good, responsible gun owners and operators from many different aspects of what you would use a firearm for. Okay? And I am 100% behind the police in everything that they do and the training that they provide, but in certain situations, I am not going to wait for the police if I do have an active shooter coming into my home or threatening my family. I own guns. I have a pistol permit. All right? And my wife has taken through it. My son has taken, has gone through it. My daughter has gone through it. All right? And they all know about that, and we go regularly to the gun range. But with the costs as they are, with the prohibitive nature of what it is right now, an opportunity like this would be great. It would be the recreational aspect of learning how to use that in a very safe, very low risk, and, again, understanding how to become proficient at the use of whatever that is. All right? Simulation is what this is about. There are simulations of uses for many different things. Pilots go through tons of flight simulation experience and history. All right? Our driving test. Now, I'm from way back when I got my license, but my understanding is the driving test now is all video. All right? And it's all scenarios as to what you do there. How good would it be if our 16-year-olds, when they first get their license, learned to actually drive more than just us or a driving school, where they can even pretend to be, you know, pretend to practice how to do good parallel parking, how to do the good safety behaviors if I'm changing lanes. All right? If I'm going past my exit, go past it rather than stopping and causing an accident. All right? Other aspects of simulation where it helps, all right, is in, sorry, I have to take this There are more than that. In any aspect, in any job where practice makes perfect, a simulation capability or a simulation experience would go to a lot of enhancement without necessarily worrying about making a mistake. And, you know, there are so many benefits that this thing provides. You know, it definitely improves and increases responsible gun ownership behavior, low costs, low environmental impact, low safety risk, realistic simulation, competitive recreation, Hunter Safety instruction, you name it. All right? The concern about it being so close to schools, all right, and the age, what they ask. Somebody mentioned previously that you can get your hunting license as early as 12 years old. That's correct. All right? But you can actually start hunting with a parent as early as eight years. And where else can you get the simulation without having to worry about them shooting themselves or having a shooting accident or any other thing? All right? In a controlled environment where there's no fear and a respect is established for gun ownership and gun operation, I think this is, it's a win for everybody. And then also, from the perspective of all the different, you know, there's no study, there is no study whatsoever that has a cause-and-effect relationship between businesses that its intent is to improve gun owner responsibility and safety to an increase in violence and suicide. There is no study that shows that. In fact, it's actually the opposite. The more that you have responsible gun owners knowing how to operate and use their firearms for the intended purpose and practicing to be good at the way that they handle that, you will have less accidents, you will have less call for the police to come for whatever the situation is. And in many cases, if they're taught the right thing with the training that they're being given, they're going to be confident. All right? And, you know, we ask about background checks for all the people, you know, for other real shooting type, you know, where you actually feel it, like paintball or laser tag or airsoft. Do we ask any of them to do a background check? And they're kids that are there. All right? What's the premise for that? Why aren't we putting on more restrictions to something like that? All right? And more importantly, even from the perspective of active shooter, call of duty, fortnight, that is, just about everybody's, every child's, teenagers particularly, you know, they're there. Why are we not saying anything about that? Now, I'm going off of that, but this isn't what this business is about. This is about training. It's about scenario. It's about safety. It's about responsible gun ownership and operations. And from that perspective, I wholly support this thing being available to all of us.
Thank you, Judd. Appreciate it. And moving on to Dr. Ronald Michaels is the last name on the list. State your address for the record, please, and then if we have some other speakers, we'll still give an opportunity.
Dr. Ronald Michaels, 15 Oak Tree Lane, Lime. How do you follow that? Mind me next time, Mr. Chairman, to sign up first, because there's nothing I'm going to be able to say that hasn't already been said tonight. And in fact, I recall your first comment about the Patriots playing tonight. They are still playing. They're in the second quarter.
For the record.
Yeah, okay. You don't want to know. It's good, though. I also am a DEP firearms instructor. I hold more certifications and gun permits than I probably should. I'm also a college professor. I also work for the Connecticut State Department of Education. I also have two daughters who teach at Sandy Hook Elementary School. So I'm consummately aware of the issues that have been brought up tonight. And I'm going to go back to one or two comments that have been made and then conclude the public testimony as the last speaker, I think. I am the, one of the officers of the Niantic Sportsman's Club, and as such, we have close to 1,000 members who participate in shooting sports. We also have one of the strongest youth education practices in the entire state, in fact, probably in New England and in the country. And in fact, they do a lot of laser simulation to practice for their competitions. We have been the recipient of numerous shooting scholarships that still go on in this country, and I'm very proud of our efforts to educate and train youth as young as eight years old with real firearms. This opportunity is absolutely incredible, if you think about it, that these gentlemen have stepped up and decided to make this into a business that uses lasers to simulate. Any training, any training that involves youth, kids, even as young as 16, which is the proposal, is a good thing. I don't think it's something that needs to be feared. I, like some of the gentlemen and ladies that spoke here tonight, started shooting at a very, very early age and was taught to respect firearms. And I think the proposal that is in front of you stresses, number one, safety, and we've heard... and we've heard that ad nauseam tonight. Number two, training, we've heard that too. Number three, simulation. And number four, recreation. I think we could have that all here and be successful at it. I too will echo the sentiments to the principals of this organization, being probably the most professional folks I have ever had the pleasure of knowing and working with, and it's my pleasure to support this proposal. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers that wish to speak? Did he raise his hand first? Go right ahead, absolutely, go ahead. It was like simultaneous. I saw three hands go up. Go ahead, sir, go ahead. You're the closest to the podium.
My name is Jas Avla. I'm a resident of 15 Freedom Way.
Could you, do you mind spelling your name?
Sure. First name's Jas, J.A.S. And last name's Avla, A.W.L.A.
Thank you.
So who am I? I'm one of the principals of the business, so I'll skip the part whether I'm for or against. I also happen to be a resident of this town. I'm a father of two, a husband, and I'm a local business guy in town as well. I'm a Yale graduate, and last but not the least, I'm an immigrant. So every day I remind myself, it's a privilege to be part of this nation and this community. Who am, who am I not? I'm not an activist. I'm not running for office, and I'm not taking a stand in this debate. I've also, I had no prepared comments. I didn't plan to speak. So I'm just going to state five things that I want to respond to based on the things I've heard. First, I want everyone to know in this room that it's very foolish for all of us, the principals, to launch a business that doesn't have a broad appeal. It's very important for us that it has a broad appeal, and it continues to be a hope that as you understand more about what we are doing, you'll embrace it and understand that our intent is in the right direction for the benefit of everyone. Up until the age of 18 years, I used to wear a turban. It's part of my inherited religion. I'm a man of color. So for anyone to imply that this business will promote hate towards any race or ethnicity is just plain ignorant. I have two kids in middle school, and I, and I can promise you for every parent in this room, for anybody to think that you put your kid or set an example that's not right or in harm's way, that, to me, is just plain foolish. CT Examiner, somebody mentioned the article only published in CT Examiner. They called us at 9:00 AM one day, and we were with them at 12:00 AM. I was out of town, so my other two partners engaged in that conversation. The day they never called us. Neither did anyone else that's standing here claiming that we didn't provide enough information. So to say that we, I would actually offer an Oprah invitation for anyone to know more, reach, reach out, we'd be more than happy to engage. And for anyone to say that we have been holding information or are sentimental, that's just plain convenient. And last but not the least, regarding the naming of the business, I have never, to this day, and I plan never for the remaining years of my life, ever volunteer myself to name someone else's child. I think it's a privilege of capitalism, and for anyone to claim otherwise, that's just plain un-American. Thank you.
We had a couple folks in the back that wish to speak. Start by stating your name and address for the record, please.
Nicole Giannsanti, and I pay taxes at 277 Main Street.
What was your name again, ma'am?
Nicole Giannsanti.
Nicole Giannsanti.
So I'd like to preface my little short story with the fact that my fiance is a CO at Corrigan. He is a chemical weapons specialist for their CERT team. And with my three children in our house, we actively practice sound gun practices on a regular basis. It's a dialogue that's in our house very frequently, very comfortably, and I'm proud to say that my children have a good understanding of the importance of guns and our Second Amendment rights. With that being said, I'm here to advocate on behalf of all community-engaged mothers within southeastern Connecticut. Concerns with underage influence and proximity to school have arguably been the most consistent topics mentioned tonight. Mothers and families were not properly offered the public notices required that offer opportunity and first-touch information regarding the list of special permits applied from VFT. The sections cited did not accurately support the categories of interest, and two sections were missing entirely from the notice. 11.2.2 is arguably the most critical permission requested. In fact, the word "training" is mentioned eight times in the application submitted by Attorney Green and his crew. However, the topic did not make it to print, and any multitasking mother looking to self-inform, exchange, and healthy debate within the respective community, they have not received a fundamentally proper opportunity to weigh in. In addition to the woefully deficient publications offered, the application itself is littered with nonsensical inferences. And what is able to be cited and coherently presented leaves a myriad of industry-related opportunities for expansion with minimal need for formal paperwork submissions, most notably the opportunity for pop-ups, gun shows, et cetera, naturally presenting additional revenues of income for Detective Mark Cuomo and Matt Fleischer, sorry if I said your last name wrong, who have already previously taken ownership of firearms involved in East Lime resident search and seizures. And I lost my page. How about that? Hang on. It's just one more paragraph. I wrote it here. Here it is. So out of respect for the general public, who is under the assumption that a published notification in the day will provide them a fully inclusive synopsis of the queries at hand, I humbly request the board require a resubmission from the applicant with both legally coherent requests and proper citations to properly notify the moms that would absolutely frequently have a couple questions of their own, both good and bad, for or against. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Then we had, there was another speaker in that same area. Okay, couldn't quite see him.
Hello. My name is Spencer Iannatuno. I am a resident of 6 Old Black Point Road. Unlike Mr. Giannsanti, I've come with nothing prepared. I just wanted to talk about the amount of opportunities that the VFT will create for us, us being my age group. I am 17 years old. I'm a senior at East Lime High School. I'm going to talk about a little bit about who I am and what I think this could bring for all of us. Junior year, I was our class president at the East Lime High School. Senior year, I'm our full senate president, so I oversee everything going on within the governments of the school. This project, I've talked about it with my friends a little bit, and the excitement just is always there, not only for the entertainment purposes, but also for the opportunities as young people to find jobs, not only that we can participate in, but jobs that people will enjoy at our age. I myself, I just came from work. I work up at Supercharged, the go-kart place up in Oakdale, wherever it is. I enjoy it. I love doing what I do, but it is a job. And I think the big part about me being there is that I enjoy it. A lot of my friends, they work at restaurants, they work at docks, they work anywhere that they can find work, and people say they don't like their jobs. I think an important thing for our age group is to find a job that we love and discover that we love working, and that even if your first job isn't what you love, it's something that you can find love in. If, and this opportunity is given to all of us because it's not only, like, what teenager wouldn't want to go work at a virtual shooting range? Not only to find work and find entertainment in working, but also to find education in such job. A lot of kids, I feel like, would benefit from the education of having, like, that experience with the guns, because I know myself, before I learned about them, guns were always scary, not only because of what they could do, but because of what I didn't know they could do. If I, I feel so much more educated now on the topic of guns, that I feel safe whenever a gun's in the room. And I feel like a lot of the fear just comes from not knowing exactly what they can do. Even if they're just sitting on the table, it still creates fear because people don't know. And if you're educated at a young age like I am at, then you can learn about it, and there will be no fear at all. And I think that's so important for everyone to experience, because it's something that is always going to be in your life, maybe not presently right away, but the police force always carries guns. And you could see police as someone who is scary because they carry a gun, or you can see them as someone who you trust because you know that they know how to use the gun, and you as well know how to use the gun. So I think it just opens up a lot of opportunities for jobs, for, again, entertainment, obviously. You don't have to work there. You can go there and learn and also be entertained at the same time. And I guess that also brings me back to the fact that if you enjoy learning as if you enjoy your job, it's not like working or learning. If you're learning and enjoying what you're learning about, then it just becomes an experience that you'll remember for your entire life. So I think that nothing bad could come from this, only learning and opportunities for not just everyone of the age that's in here, but also my own age group. Thank you.
Thank you. I just got to say, that was outstanding, irregardless of what he said, the content, to be a high school senior and stand up there with the courage and bravery and confidence. If that's our town's future and our country's future, we're in pretty good shape, because that's, that was impressive. What an impressive young man. Thank you. Are there any other, any other folks that would like to speak?
Hi there. My name is Erin Gertin. I live at 8 Old Black Point Road here in Niantic.
Was it Erin Burton?
Gertin. G-U-E-R-T-I-N.
Thank you.
Having been sitting out in the lobby and watching all of the previous speakers, I felt the need to express my opinion. I felt that some of this, not having anything prepared, you know that these are my words. I am not reading something that somebody else may have written down for you. I'm not accusing anybody. I'm just putting that out there. Having people say, will these targets be of people of color? Will these targets be wearing turbans? Will these targets be racially linked? I think that was extremely inflammatory, and I think it was purposeful, in order to incite anger, fear, and other feelings against this proposal. I feel that people who are putting it out there about where this is located, being near a school, there is Ron's Guns in our town that has real guns, real ammunition that people of whatever age with a permit can have access to. Ron's Guns is directly across Boston Post Road from our high school. This proposal is a laser shooting range. Yes, it will be used for training. As somebody who recently, and I mean just a few weeks ago, went through Mark Cuomo's pistol training class, he was, as other people have said, nothing but professional, nothing but safe. I feel he is excellent at proposing a safe, professional environment. We have a sportsman's club in our town already, in addition to Ron's Guns, that has live, real guns, live, real ammunition that teens and people who have expressed concern about this proposal have access to. This laser shooting was part of my training in that pistol class. First, we spent many hours learning, going over safety, going over the parts of a gun, going over what to do, what not to do. After we took a written test, we then practiced with a plastic laser gun, for lack of a better word, the laser pointing at a target, so that before we touched a real, live firearm with real, live bullets at the sportsman's club, we learned how to practice with that laser gun. Now, everybody brings up Sandy Hook. Everybody brings up school shootings. Sandy Hook was a young man with mental instability who had access to somebody else's weapons because she did not practice the law of securing her weapons. She thought it was okay to allow somebody with a known mental instability to have access to these weapons. She was also the first victim of his shooting spree. People who go off on these shooting rampages have mental instability. These are not people who are going to a laser range to learn target practice, to train as professionals, to train as pre-professionals. My daughter in the back of this room, who also may speak, took the class along with myself and my husband. She is currently in school. She may want to become a police officer. She may go to that laser range to perfect her shooting skills, to perfect her aim, to perfect her safety and handling of a firearm. I really do not understand the purposeful bringing up of, again, inflammatory issues like race, inflammatory issues like school shootings. That's not what this is about. And I just hope that the board, the committee, can see this and vote accordingly. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Do we want to make an announcement in the back there, see if somebody wants to speak? Would you like to do that, Brooke? That'd be great. We just don't want to leave anybody out.
I can hear you in 30 seconds.
30 seconds away.
Yes, it is strange to hear that, isn't it? The echo.
Just taking some notes. Moving on to follow-up questions by the commission. Looking right and left. Who would like to start with any questions for the applicant at this point?
I think you never, you never did mention sales.
There will be no weapon sales on site. What, the retail aspect of t-shirts, that type of stuff?
Oh, yeah, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was one of my questions.
I think that sign is getting to be very important.
The sign?
Yes.
We can work, that's, that'll be.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
My staff have spoken to the applicant at great length about signage already. As you know, essentially, it's a purview of my office according to regulation. And I think you all know my position on signs. I'm not a great fan. We've talked about tasteful signs and appropriate signs. I had the same conversation with Bob's and with other applicants. So that's something we will work through at that level, which is, that's delegated to my office.
Absolutely.
But with that said, we have already begun that discussion at length.
I have every confidence in staff when it comes to signage. You live around this town, it's signage in this town, and it's all very tasteful for the most part. And so, you know, kudos to you for, for your work in that area, and that's certainly not a concern of mine. I don't know that it's a concern of any of the other commission members, the signage.
It's a concern of mine.
It is a concern?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have confidence that staff will, will take care of the signage issue and ensure that it's aesthetically pleasing, that it's fitting for our town?
I don't know if we'll have the name "Guns" on it or not.
I don't think there's any, there's been any reference to the word "guns" being on it.
No.
No.
If I may offer, and certainly the applicant's here, and his attorney can represent that, but we did talk about naming logos and nothing more. I don't think it was envisioned that the term "gun" was going to be in the signed package, but perhaps we should hear from his attorney on that question.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we have people who question that.
No questions.
I'd like a little better answer.
No, right, right.
Neither the word "guns" nor "firearms" will be in the signage.
Right. Thank you. That answers that question.
Attorney Harris, while you're up there, please.
Yes.
The other building is going to be used for what?
Storage.
Just storage. What kind of materials are going to be stored in there? Are we talking like the t-shirts and stuff? I mean, no, what, no other simulated weapons are going to be stored in there?
No, no. Not at all. This is excess supplies and that type of stuff. I'd just like to mention one thing, if I might. See that orange that I pointed out earlier? That is, would be the classroom as well. That's where the training would take place, where the education would take place. And that's the purpose of that orange or red, however you want to look at it, room. In addition to the other aspects that I described, that's where the initial classroom would be.
Another question for you.
Sure.
So now, you're going by the United States Practical Shooting Association's guidelines, per se, according to the memo that I read. Is there any possibility of holding tournaments in there for this association in simulated weaponry?
Why not?
Yeah, there would, there would be that possibility.
Sure.
But again, it's all laser, yeah.
Understood.
Yep, that was a list of questions presented early in the dialogue. Would you be prepared to answer at least some of these? Michelle Maitland.
Oh, dear. What's in mine?
Want this?
Do you have a copy?
Yeah.
There is. Would you like me to go through them one by one?
I think there might be some people who would like to hear.
Okay.
Some of them, anyway.
Some of them may have been answered, but several didn't want.
Things that haven't been answered already, I guess.
They would reference to traffic.
No, there wasn't, we didn't do a traffic study, but this is an L.A. district and it's off a main road in town.
Right.
We didn't require any traffic study for any of the other applications that I was part of in this general area.
One of the questions was, what measures will be taken to identify or deny services to troubled individuals? Or would you ask for identification of some sort?
Well, as I said in, in the beginning, that when, when an individual approaches the front desk, that they look at age, and obviously, if there's any indication that the person, you know, outward indication that the person is unstable, they would certainly be denied admission to the facility.
And how about training of employees? Who would be doing all that?
That would be done by the staff, principally Mr. Como, Mr. Como.
There was a question, it's one of the questions on here about the co-location of a facility doing training and also recreation, as if those two things aren't mutually exclusive. So I just think, maybe some commentary about how...
I don't think they are mutually exclusive. It seems that...
Right.
The, the result of the training would be the use for recreational purposes. They go hand to hand, in my mind.
I heard a couple of speakers talk about safety and safety being paramount from the moment they walk in to the moment they leave.
And...
Whether it's a training component to what's happening, or it's an entertainment component, that safety is of paramount importance.
And that would be, that would be the beginning of the program in terms of the permitting process, in the event that someone would look, like to obtain a full permit. But this provides that training facility under controlled situation and easily usable lasers that don't have the potential in the early stages when you're not experienced of producing untoward results.
That's less my question and more one that was broached by a couple of the folks that spoke, and I just wanted you to speak to that. Thank you. Does anybody have anything else?
Is there any way of vetting, or this is one of Michelle's questions, vetting or background checks required so specialized training is not given to felons connected militia or terrorist groups?
Well, this, this is training on how to function with, with a weapon, okay?
I know. The question was out there, so I...
I, I just don't see that you could, you would require background checks for this type of activity. Again, it's far less invasive and far less dangerous than some of the paintball activities.
You're not necessarily talking about the recreational aspect of the business.
Well, again, it's, it is in a controlled environment and it's all based on laser.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just to change subjects here, but if this application, as you know, I'm a big advocate for sidewalks, Attorney Harris.
Yes, I do know that.
So if this application does get approved, is it really that bad to put in sidewalks? All I hear tonight is about safety, right? And walking on the grass, if somebody trips on a divot on the grass, which is maintained by the occupant, that occupant is open to?
I would counter that with, there's, number one, you don't want to draw too many people walking because it's a dead end. And if they try to go across that bridge, it's extraordinarily dangerous. The, as I indicated, the two prior applications that I was involved in, sidewalks were required.
I was not involved in those.
That is true.
I am involved.
The medical center also doesn't have a sidewalk, so it would end at, at our site. And admittedly, the medical center has limited frontage. And the final, as I mentioned, is these people are tenants here, and it's, it's a substantial expense analogous to a capital expense, which is usually the landlord's responsibility.
I don't think sidewalks is a mission myself, no.
In a light industrial, I don't, I don't think so. We don't want to promote walking in a light industrial.
Can't blame me for trying. Sorry.
Yeah, well, we have different opinions here. That's the, that's the beauty of the commission, you know?
You all don't, you all know it's a...
I look at it from a common sense perspective. I think sidewalks in a light industrial area don't make sense because you don't want to promote people walking in a light industrial area.
Why did ABC put them in? But whatever.
Well, as I said...
Carry on.
Any questions, comments? Did you have something further to add to that?
Well, I was just going to say, as I indicated, there was substantial activity right in, right adjacent to the buffer, and if people trying to walk by would potentially have a safety issue. That's one of the reasons why that sidewalk was put in. Here, we have tons of space.
Thank you.
We're talking about a, a laser activity.
That's right.
And we have the gun club in town.
That's right.
With thousands of guns, and not a word is said about it.
That's right. Everything is digital and virtual here.
Yeah.
That's the reality.
And, and it's educational, too. I mean, don't forget that aspect of it.
Which is a huge aspect. Any further or closing comments?
Well, very honestly, I think this is an ideal location for this activity. It's, it's right off the highway, if you will. It has good access, and it's, it's a building that's basically off by itself. And I, and I think the use is, is appropriate for this area, and I don't see that the comments with respect to a detriment to the community are really valid. This, this, better to have this controlled facility teach people the right way to have weapons than for them to just get a permit and buy a weapon. So I would say that this would be a benefit to the community and as well as law enforcement in general, because we expect that law enforcement would use a facility for training purposes as well.
Thank you, Attorney Harris. Any final comments or take a motion, anybody?
Good?
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
She did.
You did?
She doesn't have a microphone.
And of course, I'm not...
That's all right.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second. Mr. Peck, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, standing in the manner, we are closing the public hearing. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to take a two-minute break in case any...
Let's take a, yeah, let's take a three or four-minute break, and we'll come back to our regular meeting component. Thank you.
You like?
We're going to go ahead and resume. Folks will be seated, or? Moving on to the regular meeting. Application of Viking Firearms and Training LLC for a special permit for indoor recreation, Section 11.2.4, retail sales, Section 11.2.5, and office, Section 22.1.9. At property identified, the application is 15 Industrial Park Drive, East Lime Assessor's Map, 26.1 Lot 2. We've closed the public hearing. Here we are, discussion.
Yeah. I'm really concerned about one thing. In the parking lot, no one mentioned the parking lot. Knowing, I own a pistol and other guys, and in the parking lot, we both shoot. What do you got? I got this, you got that. I'd like to be assured that there's no assembling going on in the parking lot, particularly when you have a, an event going on. I don't know how to do that. That's a concern of mine.
You mean like in terms of, you know, people carrying guns?
Yeah, you, yeah, which is normal with, under that type of occasion, yeah.
Yeah, but you could be doing that at Stop &amp; Shop, and I wouldn't know you'd be carrying the guns.
Yeah, but you don't get 100 of them being there.
You don't know.
You're going to have 50 guys, 60 guys, well, I think it's maybe 30, or maybe 10 of them. That's a, I don't know whether it's a turn up, but I feel uneasy about it.
I do, too.
If I could be assured there's no assembling in, in the parking lots, that would make me comfortable. Someone goes around, hey, no, no, no gathering in the parking lot.
No loitering, per se?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
If I may?
Yeah, you want to speak to that?
You may, you possibly could add a condition that the applicant monitors parking lot or even post it, or some consideration such as that, if that would be helpful, should you choose to go forward.
Mm-hmm. No, I'd be, I would be one of those guys. That's what I said, yeah. That's it.
Yeah. Just signage saying no loitering or whatever it is, like do something.
Yeah, something. No loitering with weapons.
Or no camera.
Yeah, yeah.
So like to monitor their parking lot for gatherings?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't see it as an issue myself, but it is what it is.
Anyone else?
I mean, he answered a lot of my questions. The only question I had was, you know, they said that 16 years old, which I think is good, and he had a couple of people testified at 8 years old, and the regulations that I looked up say, you know, like for hunting licenses, it's 12 to 16 when you renew your license, so.
How do you justify going against it when you got the state law saying 12 and/or eight?
Right.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just clarifying, that's all. But I don't...
I don't have any problem at all with the tactical training that's going to go on there. I think that's, I think my, my bigger concern is the recreational aspect of it.
I think what they mean by the recreational aspect is, you know, I watched a video on their USPSA or whatever it was, and it's, it's more so of like a competition-wise, you know, that they use live ammo on that to where they went around shooting their tards in a timely fashion, so.
Well, there's no live ammo here.
No, no, but I'm just saying...
It's got nothing to do with...
No, but I'm saying in terms of that, you know, being the laser simulated guns, per se, I see the recreational part as that. You know, I don't see it as, you know, like, you know, fighting against other, you know, simulations to where you're defending yourself. I see it as more like a target thing to where, how many targets you can get in under a minute or, or whatever.
When you're talking team against team, yeah.
Recreation, that's what I, that's what I see on this aspect. I don't see it as kids going in there, you know?
I see it as an extension of the training and safety is paramount from start to finish. That's all I see.
I agree we're doing that.
Because if you do look at the video games today, I agree with some of the people that said video games are actually more dangerous today than something like this, as to where, you know, like Officer Cuomo, Detective, excuse me, Detective Cuomo, obviously he's got high praises in terms of his education. And, you know, you heard him all say safety, you know, DEP officers, former police officers, et cetera. Personally, I think, you know, the more education that is spread throughout our community and other communities is good. I mean, I'm not a gun user, I'm not a gun owner, but...
This to me creates the line.
Safety, 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 yeah, yeah. So I think, you know, the recreational part of it is more like the competition-wise.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
For me, as chairman looking at this, I mean, I respect everyone's diverse opinions here. We have to and we do, we're very sensitive to that. And we know that this application is, in one of the speaker's words, objectionable to some, and, and for, you know, some reasons that folks feel are legitimate concerns. You know, with that said, it's, it's my opinion at least, I don't want to speak for anybody here, that I believe this business, based on everything I've heard here tonight, knowing what the business truly is, that it would be a benefit to the community. I think the proposal stresses safety. I think there was one speaker that talked about how it increases gun owner responsibility, and I think that it's rational to reach that conclusion as well, that it does. I also agree that comments about targets that were made and references that were made about the targets' race and color and ethnicity were inflammatory and weren't necessary here tonight, in my opinion.
I think he's, I think he did mention there would not be human targets.
He did, but then there was a question from the audience, from spoke, one or two people that spoke that questioned that and wondered, surmised that maybe the targets would be people of color or people of a different ethnic background or something along those lines.
That's a nut.
And I, I, I just flat out disagree with that. I don't agree with that line of thinking. I think this, this business, I think it was said by an earlier speaker, that this business is more of a solution than a concern, in a, in a broad sense, in terms of teaching gun safety, the educational component.
It's a business.
Yeah, it's a business, and it's a business that has a right to name its business, what it wants to name its business. This is America. And, you know, again, recognizing and understanding the concerns of some of the community, and I fully respect those concerns. I, I don't see any basis for this commission from a health, safety standpoint and looking at land use. We're charged with land use. We're to make decisions on what's in the best interest of this town from a land use perspective. We've got an empty building, an empty cavern sitting there for the last couple of years, and we've got a bona fide business that's willing to move in there and, and make it viable and create tax dollars for the town. I think that, from ABC and for, for many, many reasons, that this is a good proposal and a good, a good fit for our town. And that's all I have to say.
The only thing I say is, I actually do have a problem with the name, with that being our high school mascot. I'm uncomfortable with it, I'll be honest. That's my thing.
We've got an empty building, an empty cavern sitting there for the last couple of years. And we've got a bona fide business that's willing to move in there and, and make it viable and create tax dollars for the town. I think that from A B Z and for, for many, many reasons, that this is a good proposal and a good, a good fit for our town. And that's all I have to say.
The only thing I say is I actually do have a problem with the name, with that being our high school mascot. I, I'm comfortable with it, I'll be honest. That's my opinion.
I appreciate that, I do.
Can I ask where you came up with Viking firearms?
East Line is Viking.
All right, so it is basically after the mascot.
Final questions, comments, concerns?
I am, I came in here with an open mind, as I always do. I listened to a lot of good input, learned a lot. And based on, you know, it would be easy to get into a political discussion, which we don't want to do, but based on what we are charged with, going right down the list, I see that this application fits what we want, what we should accept. I think it's a positive thing. I see a lot of positive input here. And the negatives, I understand and respect the opposition, but I think, I think the pros outweigh the cons here.
Anyone else?
Be better with a sidewalk.
Mr. Chairman Walker?
Yes.
I wonder if, as the term Viking causes some concern, I wonder if the, if the business were amenable to changing its, its name? If they would have to submit a new application if they were to do so?
Ms. Hardy, can I have you go up there for the mic, please?
She's, she's fine, you're fine. Our ex officio is fine. She's good, she's good right where she's at. Thank you, thank you for that. I might just defer to staff on that in terms of, they wouldn't have to submit a new application.
No, but I just a brief comment. It's their choice of their business name. From a land use perspective, I don't have any authority and I would question whether you do. Certainly as a request, that's appropriate. Or as an acknowledgement that the name is found to be questionable by some folks. I think that's appropriate and if they make that choice, I don't think that has to be applied. I think the hearing record is pretty clear.
Right. That's a choice they can make after the fact and it could be discussions about that.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think like anything else, we let the market determine the appropriateness of a name. And I don't think we have any right to require a name change without some town ordinance or change the constitution or something.
Thanks, Don.
They just can't use our logo, I don't think they plan to.
Well, without, I'll take a motion. I think we're ready for a motion. Unless there's some final thoughts somebody has.
All right. Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to make a motion to approve the application of Viking Firearms and Training LLC for a special permit for indoor recreation, Section 11.2.4 Retail Sales, Section 11.2.5 and Office, Section 22.1.9. At property at 15 Industrial Park Drive, East Line, with the waiver on the sidewalk.
Not at the parking lot?
No.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Dwyer. Any final thoughts, comments, going once, going twice?
Sidewalk.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, vote carries for, one. Congratulations to the applicant.
Another victory for the opponent.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Still think about that sidewalk.
All right, we're still in the meeting. Teddy. Teddy. I, I came back for him. He didn't want to drive by you. Teddy, you want this? It has to stay, Teddy, you can't, I got yours. Ladies and gentlemen. We're still in the meeting. Moving on to whole business. We have none. New business, we have none. Any business on the floor, if anybody, majority board of commissioners, anybody have anything?
Are you?
We're going to go right to our zoning official, if you have anything.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, comments from ex officio.
Darlene Stevens again.
Tell your parents to behave.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
No, we're, we're, we're on to our ex officio.
We're on a, we're on a roll here.
We're on a roll, we're on a roll.
So I'll be brief. I believe that this is the last meeting of the current board. And so on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, would like to thank you particularly Chairman Walker for your astute service and representing the whole commission. Okay, appreciate stepping forward to be the chair and look forward to continuing to work with the people who are still going to be here, the hangar owners. That's it.
Thank you. We do, and I don't know, when's the swearing in? So I'm, I'm, I forget, you know, I've, I've been through this a few times because I've been here since '09, but I don't, the timeline isn't clear to me. When's the meeting? The fourth?
The fourth.
I think our meeting is before the swearing in.
That's right, she got one more.
So I got one more, right? Okay.
Are you going to come?
Oh, I'm coming.
All right. Then I'll save my speech.
That's right, that's right, that's right, that's right, that's right.
Drinks, did they say drinks?
Shot some beer. Okay, we're not lying still, are we?
Yes, we are.
We're getting a good laugh out of that. Comments from zoning board liaison to planning, boy, what's the date? Mr. Peck, did you go on the night?
They canceled it.
They canceled it, okay. So you don't have any lengthy report, any, any report for that matter. Mr. Liska is going on December 14th. And then comments from Chairman, I don't have any. This was, I didn't expect to have a, a, a room this fall and this meant much interest in this topic, in this application, but good for us and good for the town that it elicited.
I like that, yeah.
It was, it was kind of neat, I thought, actually, to have that kind of feedback and that kind of interest from the town, whether, whether opposed or whether in support of. And so it was, it was, it was a good meeting, I thought. I thought we did a good job. I'm going to, I'm going to give everybody a.
Good.
Little pat on the back there. Brooke and all of you, great job and.
Brooke, you're amazing.
Amazing, that's a lot, that's a lot to handle. That's a lot to handle. A lot of names, a lot of addresses.
That's, that's where my.
Oh, I skipped over something. We're going to go back and we're going to finish the meeting. We've got to do the approval of minutes of October 28th and November 4th. Which I did read at work. Does everybody, anybody need a minute to take a look at it or are we in good shape?
I didn't see anything.
Take them separately, take them together?
You have to do them separately.
Separately, we got to do them separately, I think.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 28th as submitted.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, is everybody there? Rowing?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, beautiful. Five of us. And then we've got the second one, which were the minutes of November 4th. You want to do that one, too?
I wasn't.
Oh, you worked that one, okay. You worked?
Oh, no. I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Of November 4th.
What was the date, November the 4th meeting?
November 4th.
A second.
We have a second, Mr. Dwyer, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Aye.
For 01. Terry abstained. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I don't have any further comments.
A second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Great job.